I'm going to call to order the City Council meeting for April 12, 2022. Do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you tell the crew that my audio is not up as yet? I can't hear you guys yet.
Your mic's not on. Mayor, can you hear me?
No, I hear you just fine.
Are you hearing us?
I hear you fine. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. A quorum is present for the City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
Members of the public who want to address the council at the public meeting can dial in for the open session at 888-251-2949 or 215-861-0694. And you have to use this specific access code for April 12. It's 6721843 pound. Operator, are there any callers?
No, Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay, with that, we will begin the meeting.
Mayor, the library may have some speakers.
Oh, I see that. Okay, let's try the library. Are there any, are there any public speakers at the library?
No speakers, Mayor.
All right. Madam City Clerk, yes, ma'am?
For the, for the, for the record, public comments were received.
All right, and you'll pass them out?
Yes, Mayor, they were.
Item one, CSA one, and H one?
Mayor, if I could pause you for a moment, we were going to pull an item.
I'm going, I'm going to do that right after this one.
Okay.
Okay, okay. All right, item one, CSA one, and H one?
Warrant register.
Move allow payment of the bills.
Moved in a second.
The council members' mic is not on. Can we redo that? Okay, now it's on. Mayor, Councilmember Morales moved, and Councilmember Dotson second.
All right, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers, Successor Agency members, and Housing Authority members, Dotson, Padilla, Morales, Falk, Mayor Chairman Butts.
Okay, and I, and with that, we're going to pull DR one for this meeting.
DR one.
Now, Madam Authority, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider multiple actions associated with the Inglewood Transit Connector project.
Has a notice of this hearing been given to the time, form, and manner as required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Yes, Mayor, notice has been given, and an affidavit is on file.
Madam City Clerk, have been communications been received on the matter?
Yes, Mayor, communications have been received, and they've been passed out.
So receiving filed communications. Is there a staff report on the matter?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, it's Louis Atwell. Yes, there is. Lisa Trifiletti of Trifiletti Consulting will be providing the staff report to the city.
Good afternoon, Council members and Mayor Butts. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the approval for the Inglewood Transit Connector project and all the related entitlements. I know many of you have heard about this program before, but for the record, we'd like to just make sure we all understand the project, the accomplishments to date, and really dive into the EIR as well as seeking the approval of the final EIR. So it's a very big day. Just again, by way of background, this is a program that really tries to close the first last mile gap to the Crenshaw Line and connects all of your city center, you know, activity centers to the Metro Regional Rail System. And as you know, it's about 1.6 miles, and it does bring significant environmental and socioeconomic benefits, and it really not only improves transit access for every day, but it also helps tremendously on event days, and big events are here to, are slated for this, for this area. We have three Olympic venues. We have opportunities here to showcase the city of Inglewood on the world stage, and truly, this is a legacy investment that you have all been supportive of as we've advanced throughout this process. It includes three stations. There is a station at the downtown Inglewood Market Street, across the street from the Forum, and across the street from SoFi Stadium and Hollywood Park, and in short proximity to the new Intuit Dome, which is already under construction. And the project will be delivered through a P3 alternative delivery model using the design, build, finance, operate, maintain, which you see being implemented right now at the Los Angeles World Airports. This is an elevated guideway system. It is agnostic to the technology. Rubber tire, monorail, steel wheel, and all of these technologies that are actually competing at this moment in time to serve your city all must meet an acceptable level of technical maturity. So, this is intended to show you just a visual image of the new front door of Inglewood, and we're working in close collaboration with LA Metro as to how to make that connection to the downtown Crenshaw area. As you know, we're looking for synergies to improve all of Market Street while this project moves forward. And this project includes design standards and guidelines. The goal is to minimize structural components, improve column spacing, really think about streetscape improvements, and just think about overall design. We are very excited to convene a Market Street task force. It is important for us to work with small business and neighboring properties during the construction period, as well as think about long-range future programming so that we can really have a revitalized area. And coupled with the implementation of this program, we have secured $8.5 million for the downtown revitalization to allow for facade improvements, and we're continuing to look for those opportunities. We have to site a maintenance facility. A system like this requires it, and it's not always easy to find a location. We're very blessed to have collaborated with the Von's supermarket, and working in concert with them, we refined our project so that we could co-locate with them, and they would be rebuilding a supermarket as part of this project, and they're going to be before you as soon as they finish their design plans and their entitlements associated with this follow-along project. But our EIR covers that work. And you could see, again, this is a refined concept, and we're very, very honored to be collaborating with the Von's supermarket. Also, across the street is the Forum. There's real estate that the city is working right now with FTA's blessing to acquire for a station right across the street from the Forum. And we're in collaboration with the Forum and the Hollywood Park and SoFi Stadium stakeholders to make sure that our pedestrian connections and our transit access really understands their needs on their side of the street as much as it is going to be on our side. As you know, when we first released the draft EIR, the idea was to have the stations, which you can see here in the yellow boxes, to be located in the public right-of-way, along Prairie. The idea was to have a station that would straddle Prairie and Pincai, and then ride at Hardy Street. And we got a lot of feedback when we released that draft EIR, and the city listened. With your guidance and support, and with the mayor's leadership, we listened to the stakeholders. Very important was Inglewood Unified School District. Worried about construction and a station being right next to the Kelso School. And when we looked at, you know, the idea of having the road open to the sky, because we are reconfiguring the lanes, and we are not going to lose one lane of traffic in capacity. But we did not want to have a design where the straddle bends kind of closed the street from the sky. And so we looked at opportunities, and we refined the project and moved the stations. That did require some acquisition of some private real estate, and that is what's before you as part of the project today. But we do believe it represents consensus and a win-win-win for many, and we're committed to working with local businesses that may need to be relocated. Also, across the street, again, you can see the opportunity for us to connect to the station at SoFi Stadium. And included would be adding much-needed parking to the area. At Market Street and Florence, while we're definitely going to be utilizing the real estate for construction laydown, which has been analyzed in the EIR, in the long-term operation, it does provide opportunity for parking. Same is for the location at Market Street and Florence, where unfortunately, no matter what technology you choose, you do have the unfortunate impact of having to remove the building at the corner that has been analyzed, and parking would be, you know, allowed there, and we could, again, it's bringing parking to Market Street, which is really part of our other objectives. So what we have before you is the zoning overlay zone. It is just a regulatory, it's just an overlay zone that is permissive. It doesn't take away from anybody's, you know, zoning land use rights. It would allow for the project area, the guideway, the stations, and all the related support facilities to just be consistent with your underlying community plan and general plan. Included is compliance with these design guidelines. As we have different technology and bidder teams looking to participate in this, it is very important that they bring the highest levels of design, especially because the system is going to be going through the centers of your city, including Market Street. And so we have very strict standards on sustainability. We looked at lessons learned from LALA APM. We really have been able to focus in on walkability, and again, looking at this interaction with the pedestrian, cyclist, transit riders, and just the automobile drivers in this area, with an emphasis on the public experience. And this is going to be communicated to all the bidders as they move into the RFP as well. Just like any traffic, any major development project, you have construction, you know, and construction. We're very cognizant of making sure that the city adopted, as part of its Environmental Impact Report, a highest standards and best practices in construction. So we have a commitment to have a traffic management plan. We'll convene a task force. We're going to have a communications team working with local businesses, informing folks of detours and construction timing, and having a 24-hour hotline. We have the highest standards and commitment to clean, construction technology, tier four commitments. And we also have, including a business assistance program modeled after LA Metro. We have, we included a $5 million business assistance program, and we're continuing to seek additional funds on top so that we can support small businesses during this time period, so that they can survive any, you know, short-term temporary construction impacts. And that tells you a little bit about, you know, how, you know, we have a commitment. It is in writing, and that is everything that we're asking for as part of our seeking of funds. So here are the benefits. You have fabulous transit ridership, both on opening day and at 2045, and this even grows into 2076 because there are some grant applications that had us look as far out as that, as that time period. You're seeing corresponding impacts for total vehicle miles traveled reduced, and we're reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And so with these kind of numbers, it's not just that you're hitting it out of the park relative to environmental benefits compared to many projects that are competing for funds and are going through these, but we are benefiting the communities and the environmental justice communities that the state is prioritizing in our, in our FTA and USDOT. As you know, unfortunately, you know, more than 90% of the surrounding project area is still designated disadvantaged and low income. And that is something that we are very proud of, all the positive transformation. But we also recognize how important transit access is to this population and your community. We are working in partnership with the Building and Construction Trades. We have an LA Economic Development Corporation report that's being finalized, and the job benefits and the economic benefits are to be noted. And you could see we have a commitment to 35% local hire, 10% disadvantaged businesses, 20% apprenticeship workers. And this is just models after all the good stuff that you've already done with local, local hire requirements.
Okay.
So here's the Environmental Impact Report timeline, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
No, just going to finish this off. We've been hard at work on the EIR for a long time to come. We've gotten taken in public, public comments. We've evaluated everything for the draft EIR. We have a project that has been crafted to have no significant and unavoidable impacts. We have really only received 21 comment letters. Most of them are support letters, and many of them are just, you know, typical agency letters, and we'll be working with regulators as we move forward. We've had a tremendous amount of public outreach, and we're committed to outreach as we move forward. We have support from people all over. And next steps is we're here to request your approval. We'd like you to please approve the adoption of the resolution certifying, certifying the EIR and the Findings of Fact and Mitigation Monitoring Reporting Program. We'd like you to please adopt the General Plan Amendment, the ordinance to approve the Transportation Corridor Overlay Zone, the changes to the municipal code, and ultimately approve the project and the design standards and guidelines for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Trifiletti. That was an excellent report. We're going to the public comment portion. Any members of the public that want to comment for the public hearing can do so now. Operator, are there any callers on the line?
No, Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay, with that, we'll go to the library. Are there any members present in the lecture hall that wanted to comment on, for the public hearing? Don't be shy.
We have a speaker, Mayor.
All right.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Good afternoon. Name is Owen Smith from the Miracle Theater. My wife and I have been in the city of Inglewood for, since 2016, so what's that, six years? And it's been a wonderful experience, and we're looking forward to further connection in the community. And I think for, from our perspective, the Inglewood Transit Connector is going to do just that. It's about revitalizing a downtown Market Street, three blocks right there that we've been watching change slowly but surely. There's great signs for further.
Sir, can you speak into the microphone a little closer? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Is this better?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just want to reiterate, the Miracle Theater has been working hard to create a space as a cultural event theater, which means people coming to downtown Inglewood. And the Inglewood Transit Connector shows that it would be exactly that. It would get people to downtown. It would move people throughout the city, and it would connect downtown area to the, as Lisa mentioned in the presentation, the three Olympic arenas that will be here in 2026, 2028, including the Clippers Arena. So yeah, the Miracle Theater and myself personally are approve the EIR here for the Transit Connector. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Franco Vega, and I'm wearing two hats. I'm the CEO and founder of the Right Way Foundation, and we have three beautiful facilities. One is right here in the great city of Inglewood off Crenshaw. Our second center is in the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Mall, and our last center is in the city of Long Beach. The Right Way Foundation is a unique program that caters to transition-age foster youth. And I said I was wearing two hats here because I'm also a county commissioner with children and families representing the second district, appointed by the Honorable Holly Mitchell, Supervisor Holly Mitchell. And as a commissioner, we've been fighting to get our kids out of poverty when they leave the foster care system. A project like this one can help us accomplish that mission. We're in full support. We love the jobs. We love the union jobs that come with this. The city of Inglewood has a large percentage of our foster youth emancipating from the system, and we don't need them to emancipate into poverty. We need them to emancipate into a jobs program like this one. So once again, on behalf of all the foster youth I serve in LA County, we're in full support of this project. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers?
No more speakers, Mayor.
Okay, with that, the public hearing portion of the hearing is closed. Are there any council comments? Hearing no council comments either?
Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir.
Mayor.
There you go.
I believe Councilman Padilla said there's a caller on the line?
Okay, we did try the callers. The operators are calling now?
Yeah, it looks like we do have a caller who joined in the queue.
Sure, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council. My name is Ricardo Rosales, and I'm with the Midnight Mission. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we hear you fine, sir.
Yes, I am calling to voice our full support for this project. The Transit Connector project is going to help our families. Apparently, our families in the project in Inglewood are experiencing homelessness, and they've been able to take advantage of the jobs offered at SoFi Stadium. And we look forward to also being able to take advantage of the jobs at the Intuit Dome when it comes. This project will allow our families to walk to the station and be able to take this people mover project and get them to their jobs and back safely. So it's definitely going to help our program, not only for jobs, but also to use the community space over at the new Intuit Dome when that comes about, get them out of their apartments and out doing some family activities by using this Transit Connector project. And also, the project will help our families and residents commute as it connects with the Crenshaw and Alex Metro lines. It'll also help reduce traffic, air quality, and improve the quality of life for all residents. We fully support this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir. Operator, are there any other callers on the line?
No, Mayor, there are no more callers.
Mayor, if I can have a couple minutes?
Of course you can.
Thank you.
Councilman Morales.
Thank you. And first, you know, thank you, Ms. Trifiletti. And I know, Mayor, you played a big role in putting this kind of presentation together. Thank you for that. That was excellent. I know that this is the most logical next step for a city like ours moving in that direction. This is an amazing development where, you know, if you would have asked somebody five years ago where we were with this, it might have been a dream, and now it's starting to become a reality because of, you know, our strong team and just the leadership. And I know even the mayor's gone back and forth to Sacramento, and I know he's going to be making some tricks, so that's huge. I just want to make it clear that, you know, the, this is a complete benefit to Market Street, as all the speakers have said, and our residents will definitely benefit. And Market Street will become, you know, better than it was many years ago, and we look forward to it. With that, Mayor, that's it. I don't know if you want to discuss a little bit, Mayor. You know a little bit better about the finances. I get some questions with that, so I'll leave that to you.
Absolutely. Are there any other, are there any other council comments before, Councilman Padilla?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, again, I want to thank Lisa and your staff and everybody involved in putting this EIR report together. All of your hard work to get the community to come to these meetings, not only the residents, but the business community, right, to get buy-in from them as well. And I know you're working hard to help assist some of those impacted businesses with relocating as much as we can, so that's really appreciated. And I also know that the impact this is going to have a positive impact on our traffic because it would alleviate folks driving their own cars and all that to come to any of our, whether they're visiting, coming to an event, or if they're going to come down to Market Street. Being able to take this ITC, the monorail system, as I always refer to it and everybody else does, is going to be really a time saver, and it's going to really help us minimize our traffic, our, out there on the streets with the cars and all that. I really like the fact that I keep telling folks, 35% local hire. You know, think about what that's going to do for our residents in the area that are looking to have a job where they don't have to, you know, at six something a gallon or whatever, be driving far distances when they can come work here, like we've done with the Forum, with SoFi Stadium, and we're going to do it at the Intuit Dome. We're going to be doing that with this. And so that's important, that we keep our folks working to provide for their families. And then the 10% for disability folks that are impacted, you know, that's also something we can't just kind of glance over. Again, this is something that's going to help our families to be able to provide for them. That is, you know, I think that's really important. And I know that you've already met with the folks at the Von's stuff, and they're going to build a new and different, better Von's, you know. So folks, don't worry, Von's is going to stay. We're going to, it's going to be bigger and better for us. You know, so people think, oh, we're losing one of our big, you know, supermarkets. No, we're not. You know, it'll be bigger and better. All of these things are going to be good, I would say excellent, for our community. I've talked to several business owners. I'm glad to hear that Mr. Owen Smith came up. business owners. I'm glad to hear that Mr. Owen Smith came up and Ricardo Rosales, you know. But I've heard also from the owners on Market Street and the surrounding residents that are in favor of this project. Like anything, like anything, there's going to be impacts. There's going to be some inconveniences. But like you said, we are going to continue as this project moves old moves to have community meetings. So it's not like, okay, this thing got approved, no more community meetings, you know. No, we will continue to work with our community to make sure they know what's happening. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further council comments?
Hi, Mayor.
Councilwoman Fogg.
Thank you so much, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Trifaleti for this excellent presentation. And I am so excited that, first of all, you and your team, that's amazing, have been doing such a good job on informing our community on what's happening and presenting a great presentation so that it's understandable. I think that the benefits that it's going to bring to Inglewood is amazing. We have had problems with increased traffic. I think that this is going to go a long way to resolve some of our traffic congestion, like Councilman Padilla said, it's going to bring more jobs to our community. So there's, there's a lot of benefits. It's going to improve our Market Street, and a lot of our small business owners are going to see increased business production as well. So I'm really excited about this and let alone the fact that it is a monorail. And most people have only seen that at Disneyland. So we our our city is elevated to one of the best cities in the world. And so I'm really excited. And I I trust you. I trust your team. And I know that you guys are going to bring the most dynamic monorail to this city. So thank you so much for all that you're doing for Inglewood, for our residents.
And Councilmember, I mean, we need to say a major appreciation to to Louis Atwell and to Chris Jackson and this team because and Sharon Kueke, your whole staff has been working in close partnership throughout this entire thing. This would never have happened without the leadership and the and the collaboration with the staff. And just to correct the record, it is an automated transit system, and the technologies are, you know, right now, the different technologies are competing. And so we have everything from monorail to cable pull system to rubber tire. And so that as that process moves forward, you'll see all kinds of proposals that include a range of those technologies.
Thank you, Ms. Trifaleti. And thank you for pointing out staff, Lewis, and and all of the staff that works on these projects. I mean, amazing projects in the last five, 10 years. Mayor, I'm sorry for the mix-up and continued to ask, but I it appears that we were having some issues with the phone line, and there are some speakers on there.
Okay, that's fine. We'll go back to them. But let's finish up council comments. Councilman Dotson, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have. I sit here and I listen to all the things, how great this project is. I want to congratulate everybody that worked on this project. It's amazing to see how far you've come. And I know what kind of work you went through to get it done, especially with Chris Jackson. And I was on the planning commission when this thing first started. I mean, it's, it's amazing to me that we got to this point. But the one thing in this project that I want everybody to remember, and all the people who live in Inglewood, the 35% higher. We need jobs, jobs, jobs. This, we get those jobs, those people can live in a city and that they love and still work here. So with that, thank you all very much. And let's just keep it going.
Okay, so before I turn it back, before I turn it back to public comment, I want to betress for the public what Ms. Trifaleti just said. Right now, our proposals are agnostic as to the ultimate technology. We just know it's going to be above ground. So we're going to just make that really clear, because that's a decision at a later time for the council to make as to what technology we're going to use. And so monorail is generic term for an elevated system. So we want to just make that clear. And with that, operator, how many other callers you have?
We currently have two in queue.
All right, would you start them, please?
Okay, for the first caller, caller, your line is now unmuted.
Yeah, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
Just fine.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Butts, the City Council and the community. My name is Dexter Hall. I'm the past president of the Road Club of Inglewood, on the board of the records with the chamber. I'm also Inglewood resident. Ms. Lisa Trifaleti, I just want to say you're doing a great job. You're on your team, Bravo Zulu, and also Bravo Zulu to the awesome leadership of Chris Jackson. This project firmly commits to priority populations, low-income populations who are primarily of people of color. The Inglewood Transit Connector will reduce their commute times and create more economic opportunities. Inglewood residents are more likely to take public transit, but historically have had not access to transit. The Inglewood Transit Connector will create thousands of jobs, estimated at 500 to 700 jobs directly related to the project, and over 10,000 Intuit direct jobs supported by this project's budget. Like Councilman Dotson said, this is committed to a local hire, a target of at least 35%. Councilman Diaz said it, Councilman Fogg, Councilman Morales, and Mr. Trifaleti, and the mayor. And this is going to prioritize our Inglewood residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Operator, the second caller?
Okay, moving on to our second caller. And caller, your line is now unmuted.
Greetings, Mayor Butts, City Council, and fellow residents. This is Matthew Newman, Board of Directors of the Inglewood Airport Area Chamber of Commerce and founder of All In Co-Working of Inglewood, a collaborative workspace nestled here in the heart of Inglewood. It's important for me to reemphasize what Councilman Padilla and my councilwoman, Dion Fogg, has shared. A project like the Inglewood Transit Connector truly brings more people in to support small businesses that outline our city. Regardless of one's tenure in the city of Inglewood, whether we've been here for two months, two years, or 20 years, it's we must embrace evolution in order to remain competitive. Again, Matthew Newman, founder at All In Co-Working of Inglewood, I yield my time.
Thank you. Operator, any other caller, other callers?
No, Mayor, there are no more callers in queue.
Okay, with that, I'm going to give a few comments. I'm going to start with Mayor Paul Tim Morales's question about financing. I want to make it clear, but we've already accumulated over $320 million in grant funds for this project. This project is going to be somewhere north of $1.2 billion. Our intent is to gather every dime of that from state, county, and federal sources. And and our project is historic. Our project is one of a kind in this country. Our project is shovel-ready. And now we're going through the E I R. So I I just want to make that clear to everyone. This is not going to be financed by the Inglewood taxpayers for construction. And for the record, I'd like to clarify and explain a few clarifications and updates to the project documents. First, the staff report and E I R resolution have been updated to reflect that the project has no significant impacts, and therefore no statement of overriding considerations are required for its approval. This is very important. Along with a few minor typos, the hearing dates were also updated to reflect last week's continuance. I could not attend last week's hearing, and it was vitally important to me to preside over the final project approval. Again, this is the city of Inglewood once again making history. Second, the GPA and zoning code amendments were updated to be consistent in format with the planning commission's unanimous support and recommendation. Finally, the design guidelines resolution was updated to make all documents consistent throughout the package of project approvals. I too want to thank the staff, Lewis, Sharon, planning staff, Chris Jackson, especially Bernard McCrumby, the legal team, and the consultant staff that helped make today's project approval come to fruition. Now, I'm very proud to approve the I T C project, the I T C E I R, and the related entitlements. This is a critical first, last mile solution. That is a term of art when it comes to making sure that you can take mass transit to get to where you really want to go. Most mass transit in this county, it was co-opted along the old Santa Fe Pacific rail lines. That was the cheapest, cheapest access to build metro train cars and mass transit on. But one thing about train tracks, they seldom go near where anywhere where you really want to go. And so cities have to figure out that first and last mile solution to connect that mass transit to where people want to go. Inglewood is one of the most diverse cities within Los Angeles County. None of all that we have done in this city as residents, as staff, and as a council matter if the residents don't benefit. Every project that we've engaged in, the reconstruction of the forum, the building of SoFi, and the soon be construction of the Intuit Dome, the revision of the Yola Building, all of them have had 30 to 35% local hire goals. That's really, really important, because equity is everything. Without access to economic growth and jobs, Inglewood residents, more than 90% of whom are black and brown, will continue to earn less and have fewer opportunities. With the investments made in this city, and with high-profile events like Super Bowl 56, the M L B All-Star Game, and the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games, there's a burgeoning opportunity for our community, for the Inglewood community. But the critical but a critical missing component is how people can get to and from the region. And that's where the Inglewood Transit Connector can change the future and bring economic security to our residents at long last. Now, it is finally the time to address the historic lack of public transit that has been a disproportionate hardship on some of the city's most disadvantaged populations, including low-income residents and other communities of color. This is a regional solution. This isn't just a solution for Inglewood. It's a regional solution. For too long, people living in Inglewood, excuse me, for too long, people living in Inglewood have been cut off from the greater Los Angeles basin, and the soaring gas prices, the ability to maneuver between Inglewood and the rest of the region is becoming less manageable. The I T C will build an important link that allows Inglewood residents an opportunity to travel throughout Los Angeles County for jobs, schools, and more. As part of the building project, the I T C is committed to a local higher talent, to hire local, to hire local talent, at least 35% of the workforce needed to build the I T C. This means a direct opportunity for Inglewood residents to work in their community, creating jobs the region has historically been without. That estimate includes 500 to 700 jobs directly related to the building of the I T C, and another 10,000 jobs that will be indirectly supported by the project. The I T C is also estimated to reduce carbon dioxide emissions by over 74,000 metric tons annually, an important figure for a community where our residents have been disproportionately impacted by air-polluted-related illness. And with that-
Mayor, I'm sorry.
-your bullshit.
I apologize, Mayor, but I've been prompted by staff that they finally fixed whatever technological issue they had with the last caller.
Oh, okay, that's good. So do we have anybody else in the queue?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a few more callers who joined the queue.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, moving on to our first one. Caller, your line is now unmuted.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Council Members. This is Chris Hannan, Executive Secretary for the Los Angeles Orange County's Building and Construction Trades Council. I also want to commend the staff and your consultants that have put together a very thorough environmental impact report and a very transformative plan to connect the metro transit line with the fantastic aspects of your city. I wanted to extend the opportunity and to let you know about some of the partnerships the Building Trades Council and our local union affiliates and apprenticeship programs are working with. We have, we have local partnerships with Career Expansion, the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, and the Inglewood School District to help residents of Inglewood come into our trades, come into well-paying union construction careers. And I just want you to know on behalf of all 140,000 members of the Building Trades, we want to help the city of Inglewood build this great project, and we want to help the city of Inglewood grow. Thank you for your time. Please, please support approving the measure.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other callers?
We do have a couple more callers in queue. Moving on to our next one. Caller, your line is now unmuted.
Yes, my name is Kokai Kwachitahidi, and I'm with the L A O C Building Trades as well. And I just want to say thank you, Mayor Butts, and the City Council for your leadership in transforming Inglewood into a top-notch international city that works for residents and workers in the world abroad. Not only will this project create local jobs right here in Inglewood, a city that I've lived in and loved for many years, it would also help improve connectivity and relieve traffic congestion. So once again, thank you so much, Mayor, and the City Council for your leadership, once again, making Inglewood a international destination, a city for all to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Operator, any more callers?
Yep, we do have one more caller in queue.
Caller, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jason Vogel. I'm the owner of Career Expansion, and just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing with the city and how important this project is. Like Chris said, we're running a terrific program with the Building Trades and Inglewood Unified School District to train 20 graduating seniors in the M C three apprenticeship readiness program, which is multi-craft course curriculum. It's the official pre-apprent- pre-apprenticeship program to the trades. And we're working with AECOM and Turner on it and the Intuit Dome to work on getting these folks work not only into that stadium, but also the Inglewood Transit Corridor Project. On top of that, we're working with the the Building Trades and the South Bay Web to get local residents trained and hired for those projects. Last week, we graduated 14 Inglewood residents. April 18th, we have 16 Inglewood residents ready to go and get trained, and we have 72 Inglewood residents in the queue, ready to go to work on Inglewood projects. So we're really hoping and praying that you get this approved, so we can get all these wonderful Inglewood residents working on these great Inglewood projects. And thank you again, esteemed Mayor and City Council for everything that you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Operator, are those all our callers?
Correct, Mayor.
Councilman Morales, thank you for shepherding that for us. With that, I want to move items two and three.
I need your second.
Need to close public comment.
Did you, you want to close public comment, Mayor, and then I have a second in your motion?
We'll close public comment and move two and three. And then second, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Motion away for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Move items five through eight.
No, Mayor. Can we, can we do it individual, please, individually?
Okay, okay. Move item five.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, I see why you did that.
Yes, sir.
Motion, motion away for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Move item seven.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Move item eight.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla- Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
The issue is made today. Okay, consent calendar, items two through six.
Go move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, DR1 has been pulled, O1.
Staff report recommending adoption of ordinance number 22-07, adding the following. One, section 2-201 of Article 5 of Chapter 2. Two, section 5-112.1 of Article 7 of Chapter 5. Three, section 7-53 of Article 5 of Chapter 7. And four, section 7-79 of Article 7 of Chapter 7.
Mo- uh, motion away for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, uh, A1.
Uh, we have four closed session items. Not present during the closed session was the mayor. As to CS1 was the worker's compensation claim of Emmanuel Hackett. There's a request for settlement in that matter. Move, second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
No, I abstain.
Yes, sir.
As to CS2, there were worker compensation claim of Louis, Louis Johnson III. There's a request of settlement on that matter.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Abstain.
Noted.
The third item was the worker's compensation claim of Eric Quintenar, and there's again a request for settlement and authority on that matter.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Abstain.
The last item on the closed session item was CS4, Roseanne Vargas versus the city of Inglewood. That was a trip and fall. There's a request for settlement authority on that matter.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson- Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Abstain.
Yes, sir.
Uh, CM1.
Mayor, it's good to hear from you as well. Uh, there are no reports from the City Manager's Office.
CC1?
Hi, Mayor, no oral reports, thank you.
I don't think there are any appointments to boards and commissions and committees. We're now to public comment.
Uh, Mayor?
You can, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, you're correct.
Thank you. Um, what we're going to do first, we're going to, uh, take, uh, callers. Operator, are there any callers? The callers, you have one minute.
No, Mayor, this time I, there are no callers in queue.
Okay, but I, I, Morales is going to go back there and he's going to find five or six more.
I'm about to bring him up, oh, give me a sec. I need somebody to buy time.
Okay, are there any, any speakers in the library? Lecture hall?
Yes, Mayor, there are.
Yes, I first want to put it on the record that I was not allowed the opportunity to speak during the public hearing. Um, you guys started off with the phone calls and then you came to the, the lecture hall. However, you guys stopped, you went back to the phone calls to allow your friends to call in and comment, and I was requesting to speak. And although public comments were not closed, I still was disallowed that opportunity. Um, I wanted to ask the council exactly how you plan on funding this project because clearly we don't have the funds for it as of right now, and it sounds like a project that will potentially bankrupt our city. And secondly, um, do you plan on making taxpayers pay for this?
No, we don't. Are there any other speakers?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Kyle Patterson and I'm a union carpenter, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity and the privilege to be here today to speak to you. I just wanted to comment on tax fraud industry. It is estimated that construction tax fraud is responsible for cheating communities out of millions of dollars in tax revenue annually. That's millions of dollars in lost revenue that could be used for, for renovating schools, repairing roads, caring for veterans, sheltering homeless, and funding other essential public programs. The prevalence of construction industry tax fraud has reached crisis levels and must be stopped. This April 11th through the 16th, Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and the United Brotherhood of Carpenters are taking part in a National Tax Fraud Day of Action, a week-long series of events to raise awareness about construction industry tax fraud. The tax fraud, the tax fraud day of action grew out of a widespread outrage about construction-
Sir, you're, sir, you're at time.
Thank you for, uh, can we count on your support to help us hold-
Sir, you're, you're at time, sir, you're at time.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, City Council, Inglewood. Construction tax fraud punishes good, fair-minded construction firms who cannot compete with the low road labor cost of fraudulent businesses. These bad actor employers are undercutting these, this competition by defrauding workers and absorbing a labor force that could be working for legit construction firms. This April 16th through six, this April 11th through 16th, Southwest Regional Carpenters and the United Brotherhood of Carpenters are taking part in the National Tax Fraud Days of Action, a week-long series of events to raise awareness about construction industry tax fraud. We are tired of seeing our construction partners being cheated out of hiring hard-working people. It's more than time that we all work together to get these toxic, bad actor employers out of our city so we can all go on and build fairly, equitably, and successfully. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. Are there any other speakers?
No more callers, ma'am. I mean, no more speakers, ma'am.
Thank you so much. With that, we'll close public comment and we'll go to any further council comments. Uh, we'll start with Council Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, again, just want to thank staff for that report on the, uh, ITC and I know you were looking to clarify the monorail issue, but, you know, us, us simple-minded folks just call it the monorail, most, you know, but I know there's technical verbiage that needs to be used, but, uh, we get it. Uh, the other thing is, uh, you know, this is National Dispatch Week for 911 operators. So having, uh, worked at the police department and, uh, worked with some of our dispatchers, they have one heck of a job, you know, when, when there's somebody in a emergency and they're calling 911, those dispatchers have to keep them calm and they have to, uh, make sure, uh, they're collecting all that important information. I always tell folks, when you call 911, it gets frustrating, and I, I know it does, because they're asking you a, a bunch of questions. You're like, just get the police here, or just get the paramedics or the fire department. But know that as, as that dispatcher is getting that information from you, they are already typing into the mobile term, uh, the MDCs, the mobile term, term, jeepers, well, the computers that are in the police cars. So those officers are getting that information real time. So don't think that they're going to wait until after you hang up to get an officer dispatched. That officer's being dispatched right away. Uh, he and, he or her are going to be there as quick as they can, goes for police and fire. So just be patient, and I just want to thank all our 911 operators, whether they're here in Inglewood or anywhere else. Uh, thank you for all you do. Thank you for, for working under the pressure that you work under every single day. So hats off to you and to your dedicated service. With that, thank you and have a great week.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Falk?
Thank you, Mayor. So I only have one announcement today. I want to let District 4 know that we are having a Protect Your Home, Know Your Risk, uh, Safety Week, and that's going to happen April 18th through the 22nd. And the location will be at our Police Beat Community Center, 2640, um, Imperial Highway. And it's going to be an informational event. You're going to, um, have, we are going to have residents learn how to, uh, know what the hazards in the home are, how to protect your home, and get additional information and what other items you can get to, um, to protect your home. But this will also include games and prizes, refreshments, and it'll be a nice neighborhood event. So again, I invite you to come out, uh, Thursday, April 21st is, uh, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. That is our launch date, and so, um, please join us. And if you need more information, feel free to reach out to my office. I'm happy to, um, provide you with more information on this event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Morales, thank you very much for your help in allowing me to navigate this remote council meeting.
Yeah, you did a great job, Mayor, and, uh, thank you for making yourself, uh, available today. I mean, now I see why you wanted to, to be here. You know, it feels like, I, I can point at maybe eight votes, no, eight, a few votes, maybe four votes, uh, that have defined us in the last seven or eight years. One was when we voted the last $18 million of our redevelopment funds for the Forum. Uh, then there was some, some of the major votes for the, uh, SoFi Stadium, uh, and the major votes for, for what's going to become the Clippers Arena, and then today. It, it, it feels like that today was one of the major votes that, uh, as soon as it starts becoming into fruition, we will continue to define, uh, who we're becoming. And it's just a big deal that today we're stepping into our future, uh, and transportation over history, that's what it's all about. You get transportation in your city right and things are going to happen. The economy booms. Uh, so outside of that, Mayor, I just wanted to say those words. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you know, you really, um, catalyzed, um, what I want to get across. You know, we have made history, particularly over the last, I would say, seven years here. We, what we've done in seven years has only been replicated, and I've said this before, in three other mega cities, New York, Los Angeles, and San Francisco. But what we've done in seven years took them in generation. I never cease to be amazed. I heard the young lady talk about how this was going to cost the city when it was clearly explained, clearly explained, that all the costs of capital construction will be done by grants from other entities, or they won't accomplish at all. This is not going to be financed by the Inglewood taxpayers. It seems that we have some people that just yearn for failure as opposed to striving for greatness. And I just want to thank the City Council because we've gone on this journey together, this journey for greatness. And I, I, I have worked in three different cities.